Can you please call the meeting to order and can we get roll call, please, Terry?
Nancy Anoni. Roger Smith.
Here.
Michael Cohen.
Here.
Matt Rooney.
Here.
Joan Navarreta.
Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Could I please have a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
I'm going to review and accept the agenda. Second.
Terry.
Matt Rooney.
Yes.
Michael Cohen.
Yes.
Roger Smith.
Yes.
Joan Navarreta.
Yes. Okay, and then so we'll get started with the preliminary audit wrap-up with the auditors from Heinfeld and Neech and I'll turn over to Missy.
Thank you, guys, from the different sides of it today. You guys know that annually we do have an audit firm that comes in to audit our establishment in various and sundry areas. Today, they're going to give us a cursory wrap-up because they're not completed because they're still waiting for some information to come in. Some things that are beyond our control and we're still working to get those answers for the county and the state and that type of thing. So, this is the usual that we go through to talk about areas that we can improve in and the solutions for those areas so that we can make sure that we are the best that we can be. And so, I first of all want to tell you, I'm really proud of all of you. You've done a really great job this year, again. And were there findings? Yes, we are humans, mistakes get made. Sometimes things change at the state level and maybe our interpretation of that is not the same as what the states was and when we get audited, we find out that, uh-oh, we need to change our thinking on this or our procedures in it. So, I actually, and I've told you guys this each year, I actually love audits because it solidifies what we're doing right. It shows us that things are areas that we need to perform a little bit in. So, this is their opportunity to give us this information. So, Heinfeld and Neech is our audit group and we have Mike and Melanie and we also have Chris and Sean. Yes, thank you. This week, so I'm going to turn it over to you guys and let you proceed with this plan.
Awesome. Thank you, Missy.
So, first off, because I realize that a lot of people who come in here probably don't go through the sort of annual audit process that the district does, maybe you're not directly involved so you don't always get to see what goes on. So, we did put together a very brief presentation on kind of what that is, which we'll get into very shortly, but I really want to start off by just thanking everybody who has really worked with us to make this possible. We come in, we destroy your guys' life for a week, and I acknowledge that. I don't know if you guys peeked into that room where we've been working, but it's chaos. We'll pull and we're going into some details, but we pull sometimes hundreds of documents. And of course, we're looking through them, we're asking for more stuff, and that means everybody who comes in has something they have to bring us. And then they have something they have to put away when we're done. So, you know, I really want to thank everybody. Everybody here's been extremely helpful in us getting this done. The fact that we can get this done in a week is really a testament to how much people put an effort into getting us what we need. So, I think I should probably start up introducing myself a bit further. I'm terrible. I'm terrible at introductions and that sort of thing. I admit that. But my name is Melanie Askew. I've been with Heinfeld Neech for a little over nine years now, doing school district audits, some city audits and other entity audits like that. And, I'll leave that there, that's good. This has been a really fun experience for me to learn how to do this stuff and to kind of go into all the things that we have to do as auditors of a government agency because it's very, very different. And I'll let Mike go ahead and introduce himself and say a little bit about him.
My name is Michael Lazon. I've been with Heinfeld Neech for 13 years. I'm a partner out of the Black City office for Heinfeld Neech and I've been the engagement partner for Lake Havens Unified the last two years. So, it's been a real pleasure to work with all of you. We're used to doing this type of presentation for just primarily just the district employees, but we were asked this year to also give it in a public board meeting and we were happy to accommodate. And if you have any questions, just please let us know and we'll do our best.
So, I'll start off with kind of what we're doing. So, what most people don't realize is when you hear the term audit, you generally think, oh, we're going in, we're being audited. It's like what a corporation gets. Somebody goes in and they check the numbers. Well, that doesn't happen that way for school districts. We're actually coming in and performing three audits in one week. So, we have several different requirements that you have to be complying with. One of the first is the USFR, the Uniform System of Financial Records. I think most people call it you suffer once they've had to deal with it. And we'll go into some detail on these here very shortly. You also, if you spend more than $750,000 of federal funds, have to go through a single audit, which is really looking at the federal compliance. Are you spending federal dollars the way you should be? Are you tracking it the way you should be? That sort of thing. And then, we also have the financial audit, which is more what most people think of and picture because it's more common in that corporate world where we're looking at, not only did you spend the money correctly, but is it being reported correctly? If you say that you have, you know, that you've spent a half a million dollars in payroll, is that really what is being done? And can we materially, you know, kind of verify that? So, and I have a little more detail, so. This is the cover of the Uniform System of Financial Records. I don't even have a paper copy. It's a rather huge book of compliance items that school districts are required to follow. And it is pretty much everything you need to know about running a school district on a pretty basic level. And it's very, very specific. It's how you, not just what you're doing, but exactly how you're doing it. Down to if you get cash in, how many days do you have before you have to put it in a bank account? And how many days after that before it has to get transmitted into your county? So, it comes down to a very specific, very nitpicky thing, you know, what information needs to be included in a report and sometimes even how that information needs to be presented. So, it's a very, very like detailed, process-driven and item-driven sort of requirement document. And it's all kind of culminated for an audit for this, for us to be able to answer a questionnaire they put out. So, this questionnaire is about 30 to 33 pages before you start putting any comments or responses in. It covers 260 or so different compliance areas and it is a yes or no document. So, when we come through and we're looking at something like this, if something wasn't done exactly in that process that the USFR requires, then we have to put a no and then we'll put a comment in. So, it's a very, very complicated process to get to and to ensure that we're getting the right information for that questionnaire. And that's the primary bulk of our audit. We're pulling anywhere from about five to 15 items per area. So, 260 areas, that gives you an idea of exactly how many different things we're looking at across the board there. And when we go through, we're going to actually go through some of the exceptions we've noticed, some of the items we've noticed, and I'll have an example to show you exactly how specific this can get and how it can affect you. So, then we have that single audit. And this one is coming out of the federal government. So, it is directly available from the White House. It's on their Office of Management and Budget. And they put out what they call the Uniform Guidance. And that's really how anybody who receives federal monies is supposed to keep track of to spend and to deal with those monies. And so, they have currently 12 compliance requirements for each grant and they have two held in reserve. So, there's a possible 14 depending on what they decide to change next year. So, for this one, it's a little more of a broader category of how these are done. So, it's not like detailed, you have to do this on this day of the year for most things. It's more of a, you have Title I grants, those are supposed to be spent on, you know, things like reading and math and those sort of things, on bringing, you know, disadvantaged pupils up to the level that maybe advantaged pupils have. But it doesn't necessarily say specifically, you have to buy this math book and use it on these days. So, it's a little more open to some interpretation and to some variation in there. And on this one, it used to be $500,000. I did want to bring this up because I think if you're looking at any of the older single audit reports, it's going to show the threshold being, you know, $500,000 of federal dollars spent to get this single audit. It's now $750,000. The other thing is, when we're looking at this, we're not looking at every single federal grant you received. We have to narrow it down and pick those programs that are considered to be at highest risk and areas, you know, where maybe there's a risk something could go wrong and focus our attention on that. And that threshold changed. It used to be everything over $300,000 is what you consider a Type A, which is something that kind of leads to a higher risk, just because obviously the more dollars you have, the more risk you have for something going wrong. That's increased to the $750,000. And so, what we do is we go in, we look at your general ledger, we look at all of those grants where you spent various amounts, and we have a whole huge process we have to go through to decide, is this risk? Is this not risk? This particular year, we're looking at special education and Title I. Previous years, we've done nutrition. I think we've been done, I think, for teacher qualities, some various areas like that. So, it is kind of a variety of grants each year that we look at. Then we get to the financial statement audit. And this one is really set up by the government, accounting standards for it. They dictate how, in general, any government is supposed to present their financial statements. You know, are you supposed to present capital assets? How do you present your cash and investments? What actually counts as cash, which seems like it should be an obvious question, but as accountants, we like to make things more challenging. So, you know, does a check count as cash? Yes. Does an IOU count as cash? No, although, you know, we could try, I guess, but. And then we have a set of standards that are specific to us on how we audit you. So, we have to go in and look at things in a certain way. We have to sample a certain amount of transactions and review certain areas very specifically and in certain ways. So, for, between the federal and the financial, we're pulling generally 40 to 50 transactions, but usually in those bigger areas, the payroll, the dispersments, kind of a general category. So, if you guys are kind of doing the math, you can start seeing why that room looks like it's piled filled with papers because we're pulling a lot of stuff to do that. And on these, we're really looking for that reasonable assurance that they're free of material in a statement. So, obviously, we could come in and we can audit to the, every penny you've spent, but I would be living in your office. This would be a full year-long audit and there would still probably be no guarantee that I could look at every single penny spent out and ensure that every single penny was done correctly. So, our standards really state that we need to come and find that reasonable assurance, you know, is it, did we get enough test work to feel comfortable that the balances are correct? And then, is it a material difference or is it immaterial? And part of that is, what we want to do is ensure that the financial statements aren't misleading to the general public. So, you know, if you come in and something says, oh, well, you know, it looks like they have $20 million in cash, but they really only have $5 million in cash, that would be misleading. If you looked at that, you would wonder why, you know, there's such a huge difference. But if you came in and it says they have $5 million in cash, but they actually have $4,995,000, well, most people would feel comfortable that, okay, rounding something that's not going to completely confuse you as to what the actual state of the district is. And so, that's kind of where we look at with that.
And a finding something like that would probably not show up maybe in the financial statement audit, but then you go back, you fall back on the USFR where even a $5,000 difference and a recantable item shows up as a USFR finding. So, sometimes you have a finding that doesn't rise to the level of being reporting their financial statements or even in the single audit report, but it ends up in the USFR because there's so many requirements that we have to follow there.
So, to kind of give you an idea of, before we go into what we looked at and, you know, some of the exceptions we found, I thought it might be good to go ahead and show you some of the areas that we look at. So, between financial and federal requirements, obviously, we're looking at all of your major transactions. We're looking at your cash, we're looking at investments, we're looking at, you know, your revenues, receivables, your dispersments, expenditures out. We're also looking at your, what is called your internal service fund, which is, in your case, your employee benefit trust. And although that is being operated kind of as a separate group, it's a separate entity in itself, it's a trust, since it is completely and entirely dependent and running only for the district, it is what they consider a component unit. And it's a blended component unit, it has to be included in your financial statements and that doesn't mean any controls over that money. There are also controls that we need to look at in terms of the district. So, that gets included in there as well. And then for the federal, as I mentioned, we looked at the Title I grants cluster, we looked at the special education cluster. Some of the major areas that we look at when we're looking at that are things like allowable costs, you know, allowable activities to making sure that you're not going out and, I don't know, partying it up in Vegas on federal dollars or something, you know, something crazy like that. So, Title I monies are being spent for the purposes of that, special education dollars or providing those services to special needs students, those sort of things. Ensuring that the procurement is being done in the way that the federal government has basically outlined you need to do, making sure you get quotes or you're going through a cooperative or things like that to ensure you're getting sort of the best price you can for the items you're getting. And there's, like I say, there's actually 14 that apply to this. I didn't want to go through all 14 of them, but if afterwards you want to just chat, I'm at the County Geek, I love this stuff. I'm more than happy to do that. The USFR, as you can see, is a much more detailed amount of things we're looking at. And in these items, we're looking down very specifically. You know, we're going, not just looking at your budget and are the numbers right, but looking at that budget and seeing, was it submitted at the right time? Was it all the forms signed the way they're supposed to be? Was it presented to the, you know, to the board and then to the county as needed? All of that. So, very, very detailed about what we're there. I think the only other thing to kind of mention on this is, obviously, these are the three audits we're doing in one. You guys are actually being audited by multiple entities throughout the year. So, there are potentially audits being done by the federal government, by the state. They're going to come in and look at particular exact programs or particular exact areas. So, quite often, I think last year, you probably had one through ADE over the nutrition cluster. And when they come in and they do those audits, you know, like we come, we sample, you know, a couple hundred items, they're going through and looking at maybe a thousand items. And they're getting more into the specifics of, you know, does your food meet all of the exact requirements in those nutrition guidelines? And they come through and actually like weigh food and they weigh trash. They'll go in and weigh the trash cans to make sure you didn't waste too much food or things like that. So, there's very, very specific audits like that going on quite regularly. If anything is noted of a severe nature or something where they're going to be demanding, you know, money back or things like that, those also end up getting reported in our audit reports. So, we try and include that information to ensure that sort of everything is being captured in those cases. Mike, did you have anything else or should I start in?
Are there any questions?
Super exciting. You guys got auditing 101 in a very. So, with all of this in mind, you know, many of these areas are still being worked on. We do have Shawna and Chris still plugging away in the other room, looking at documents, trying to go through things, maximizing our time here while we can. So, I will say this is a preliminary, very preliminary listing of what we've found. And many of these things are not necessarily set in stone as an exception. So, if there was maybe a document that you guys couldn't find while we were here, if you can dig it out, find it or verify it in other ways, then we may be able to remove them or at least kind of upgrade the wording or change the wording to indicate that although it wasn't immediately available when we were here, you were able to support that that expenditure was valid or you were able to support the information in some other manner. So, these aren't completely locked in stone. One of the areas that we looked at were the inter-fund transfers. So, what happens is you're allowed to take your, some of your federal funds and transfer it into what they call an indirect cost fund. And that's to allow for some administrative costs to be covered by your federal grants instead of directly out of taxpayer dollars. And in the process of doing that, one of the expenditures out of that grant had a coding error and it ended up not being coded in with the charter accounts. So, it kind of reduced the transfers in. That has been, I think, corrected for this year and moving forward should be good. We also went in and looked in your transportation department, but then through this, ADE kind of upped some of the things they want us to look at in terms of transportation. So, we looked at some more detail that we don't normally, we haven't looked at before. And one of the things they have is they have a new requirement that kind of went into effect at the beginning of last year, beginning of last year, end of the prior.
1450.
1450. And what they do is they require the EEU is that you go out and you count the number of kids on your bus for a minimum of 25 days out of your first 100 days of school. And then you do this funky little formula to average it out and that's what you use to calculate your transportation budget limit as far as the student riders on the bus. And in this case, you guys didn't use that 25-day minimum, you used the 100-day, which is what had been for the prior, I don't know how many years. So, that is one of those kind of USFR items where they're very specific about how this works. And I think that one we've got an easy fix that might even make your life better. We also looked at dispersments. In dispersments, we pulled 50 items directly related to just kind of a basic dispersment and expenditure test work. And then we also pulled some travel and some other ones. And in that process, for one of the 50 that we looked at, the purchase order to approve the purchase was actually created and approved after the services were ordered and in most cases, received. And it was like a training thing. And we also looked at, we looked at those as far as how they're coded, if they're coded according to that USFR guidance. Because when I said it was really specific, it is very specific down to if you want to spend money on supplies, it is coded to this particular number. And so, for three of those, the expenditures were not recorded in accordance with that. Two of those were actually coded to kind of a broader category code. So, you know, say you code 6510 for transportation, but if it's transportation that's being provided by an outside service provider, you're supposed to use 6511. And that's kind of what this case was. We used just kind of a broader transportation code instead of that really specific, this was done by someone, you know, outside. And then one of them, I think, was just a matter of like supplies to postage kind of thing, where it was once again kind of a broader category instead of that more detailed specific code. Then we also looked at the travel. And for one of the travel replacements we looked at, an employee was reimbursed $181 for a hotel room for one night when they were not traveling on an official purpose. So, basically, they, you know, one night was covered by a district function, the next night shouldn't have been, and somehow it slipped through that review process. And I do say that amount has been repaid in the current year, so it's at least, you know, like all of it's been kind of returned back to where it should be as far as the district financials go. Then we looked at your inventories and for one of the inventories, the unit cost recorded on that supply entry listing was higher than what we had on the support. And I will say that on this one, this is one of those cases where it tells you exactly how specific this USFR is and Mike kind of looked at me like you're really going to mention this. It's a $2 difference. It is not significant. This is not anything, like it's a $2 error. I think partially because unfortunately, some of your inventories are still being, having to be tracked completely manually. So, the risk that somebody can write a number down wrong as they're going through is very high with that. So, you know, but once again, we have to write no on that questionnaire and then the comment will note that, what item it was and the $2. We also looked at student attendance. And I know that one is still very much in process because there's a lot involved in this. As far as the requirements on the USFR, there are so many specific items and different things. So, this area is definitely still in a lot of flux. It's also in a lot of flux as to exactly how some of these are going to be recorded and, you know, how they, where they fall into that questionnaire. But one of the first ones we noticed is that although your individual high school subjects meet the required 123 hours, four of those subjects do not meet the 720-hour requirement. And this is something ADE has had out where I think they finally clarified some of this guidance. But in essence, a high school student, you know, a high school class has to meet 123 hours per year and you have to meet 720 hours for the year. Well, for four subjects. If you do the math, four at 123 will never equal 720. So, and then when you're doing this calculation, you also have to ensure that you're taking out any time that is not included in regular instruction. So, if there's an assembly, a PEP assembly, it's a half-day, then you have to reduce that. So, although a class might meet for 55 minutes most of the year, it may only meet 20 minutes for a few days, it may not meet at all for a few days. And so, then you have to subtract all that out to do the calculation. And I think that's what's happened, is just that some of those assembly times and non-instructional time per the Board of Education are not.
It has to be, it has to be one of you approved catalog classes. That approved, one of those approved catalog classes has to meet. Students have to be in that class for that to count for instructional purposes for finding.
So, then the next one we looked at is we look at specifically, we pull certain students and we evaluate, was attendance reported correctly? If they left partly through the day, was that calculated to be a half-day or a quarter day or however much it worked out? And for two of seven that we looked at at the high school, the absences were not reported correctly, resulting in net misstatement of zero. So, one was a little over, one was a little under, they evened out to zero between them. We also looked at the FTE membership. So, if you're considered a full-time equivalent student at the high school, you should have four subjects. And if you're taking less than four subjects, then you really get only reported as like three-quarters of a person or half of a person on that FTE. And so, for two of four high school students we looked at, it was not prorated correctly. So, there was a net overstatement of .75 on those. And as I said, these are kind of preliminary, so as we get more reports in and discuss how some of this was reported up to the state, those may shift a little bit. We also had kind of a similar one for the JTED. It's all kind of linked in because JTED and high school are tested separately, but they have similar requirements on those. Then we also had several, kind of across all of the different schools, where the district hasn't been able to provide us with what's called a 71-1 report. And that's a report that shows us what was uploaded to the state as far as their attendance. And I know there's been some communication with both ADE and the district to try and see what we can do to get those down. We can, we know the kids are there somewhere. It's just a matter of getting that report pulled down. So, this one is kind of, it's more of a, there could be an issue here if those can't be located, but right now... be located, but right now, it's more of a, we're waiting to see if, you know, if those come in next week, this can go away and we're happy. We also looked somewhat at cash, but you've not completely finished all of our review of your cash. But one of the things we did notice is that the cash balances weren't reconciled to the county treasurer timely throughout the fiscal year. And then in addition, the June 30th, 2016 reconciliation still has some differences that require some reconciling. This is something that they're very aware of, it's being worked on, but it is kind of a long process. And I do think part of that is just, you had a couple different position changes at the county, you had a couple different position changes with who's actually reconciling that account. And between the two, it makes it very difficult to get those done as timely as maybe they should be. And then the final one, just kind of has to do with that Internal Service Fund, which we have not completely finished the audit for the, for the Employee Benefit Trust, that is a separate audit we've been engaged for. But one of the items that kind of ties directly in with the district is that we didn't see any detailed bank reconciliations for the Employee Benefit Trust. And part of that is, I don't know if the trust had been providing all the information needed to really do an appropriately detailed reconciliation. So, there's no list of outstanding checks or things like that, or warrant, I should say warrant, during the fiscal year, because I know some of that is changing, you know, in more recent months. And that's actually, I think, pretty much where we stand. Like I say, we do have, some of these areas are still being worked on, you know, the cash, primarily payroll, we're still, still going through some things on that. But, do we have questions?
If you were to give an executive summary of how you read off on this audit, how, what would it say?
He's going to be the guy signing off on it, and I'll let him answer that.
So, what I can say is that essentially what you do with the financial statement audit is you end up with an opinion at the end. That's what we're working towards. And so, there are different levels of opinions. The highest one is what's called unmodified, then you have qualified, and then you get into the lower levels, which is adverse disclaimer. So, currently, again, this is kind of without all the information, right now, we are at an unmodified opinion, which is basically the highest opinion we can give, which basically means that we are assuring that your financial statements are materially free from fraud or misstatement. It's not saying it's perfect, it's not saying, obviously, we have some findings. This Employee Benefit Trust finding in the past has been a finding that's been reported in the single audit and the financial audit sections, or in the financial audit section because it, not reconciling that much cash, you know, creates issues, or potential issues. We've noted that in the past. And then also on your, on your federal compliance side, we again give an opinion as to whether or not you've met the material requirements of the federal programs. And in this case, at this point, since we don't have any single audit findings, or any findings over your federal programs, again, it's going to get an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion we can give. Going to the USFR side, we think right now, we're about between 10 and 15 USFR points, kind of depends on where we end up, which is actually about, right about average or right below average for the state of Arizona. So, you're kind of, for a district this size with this amount of activity, you know, you basically have the activity of every, of a much larger district because there's no other districts in the area. So, you're doing all the same things that, you know, a larger district does, but at a smaller level. And so, we think the controls that are in place overall are pretty good, and there's some minor points, but overall, I would say you, I think things are operating accordingly as they should.
Thank you.
How does this audit stack up against other years that you've audited? Is it similar as far as the concerns and stuff like that?
Yeah, I would say that it's similar.
We may have a few less of the USFR items. I think as far as those ones that tie to the financial statements, they're, they're kind of similar. I don't know that you've really ever had very many federal compliance issues, but, you know, there have been a few years in the past with some, but probably, pretty similar.
And then as you've gone through this, are there any, out of this whole list, are there any that are really, that you're really concerned about as far as inconsistencies?
I would say there's probably two.
And what, what those?
Yeah, the first one's the Employee Benefit Trust. Not having, not being able to reconcile with outstanding checks, not getting those reports from the Employee Benefit Trust to the district to reconcile those amounts, or at least, because the other control would be is that the Employee Benefit Trust was doing their own reconciliations over their cash records. And I think they're aware of the checks they're writing, but, you know, when you do a bank rec, when you sit down and you do your own bank recs, you have to be aware of what's outstanding. If I have zero in the bank, but I've already written a bunch of checks, well, they're going to come back in balance. So, that's essentially the same procedure, is making sure that the checks that you have outstanding aren't going to be more than what's in the bank, and doing that reconciliation between the two. So, whether that's done at the EBT side or done at the district side, and the district just reviews what the EBT does, either way, it's okay with us, but just somewhat, there needs to be at least a process in place to have that done.
Yeah, and I have done for...
Can I ask you something on that?
Yeah.
When this whole audit is over, do you come back with specific recommendations like you've just mentioned right there?
In the case of the EBT, yes.
Okay, real good.
Yeah.
You were going to say something?
Oh, I was going to say, we, on with that EBT, we haven't really fully dived into that EBT audit. So, there may be reconciliations we're not aware of at this point, because I don't have all of the information to finalize that audit. It's a smaller audit, so it's kind of one of those we, I'm hoping to finish up next week rather than take away the time here. So, that is a little bit, that's one of those that's in a little bit of flux, because if they demonstrate they have some kind of process on that, then that would reduce kind of the concerns that you guys don't have that on this end. So, it's sort of an ongoing question on that one.
And then you mentioned the second one.
That's more of the, and it's less of a, it's not, it's, from our perspective, it's not a financial statement point, but it's just, it's a USFR point, and that would be the high school as far as the meds. Making sure that you, if your goal only require that kids to be a full-time, the full-time student are enrolled in only four subjects, only four district subjects, then they would have to, those four subjects have to at least meet for 180 hours apiece to get to the 720. So, then, and then, but if they're not, require four subjects, or not require those four subjects to be longer, then you're looking at requiring either more subjects to be a full-time, like five subjects to be a full-time student, or you're looking at reducing the full-time equivalent of that student, which then reduces the district funding. So, just making sure that you have that appropriate full-time equivalency number for each student, because that could potentially impact funding in future years if not corrected.
And was that, like last year, or the, in previous years when you did the audit, was that ever an issue?
We, our understanding of what the, how ADE requested us to approach that was that we were basically taking your calendar and looking at what a six or seven-period student would look like. ADE has revised their information to us, and so now, we're looking at just what do you consider to be a full-time, what's the minimum number of grants you consider to be a full-time student? And in this case, it's four. And so, we're just examining a, if a student was only enrolled in four classes, so we did change the way we approached test work for the 1516 audit. And one thing we've done as a courtesy to the district and not extra billing or anything like that, is we look, then looked and examined your schedule for 1617, for this next, the current fiscal year that we're in. And we haven't reported anything, but if not corrected, you essentially have the same deficiency repeating without a correction to the student's schedules or the way you report them to the state.
And to follow up on that, this is something where you guys are not alone in this hour requirement. And I think part of it is because ADE, you know, sometimes they change their focus and they, they want to focus in on certain areas, or they realize that maybe the information they provided previously was not as clear as it could have been. I don't know if you guys have seen some of the ADE memos, they're not always the most clear documents to translate and read. And so, you're, you're not alone in this. I do have, I've had several districts with this concern coming up. I've had several come up with kind of that, where we're having trouble finding those 71-dash-ones. That has to do with some of how that's, you know, transmitting and communicating with the state. And, you know, none of these are like, wow, I've never seen this before kind of things. I think that you're struggling with many of the same things that many other districts struggle with, and one of them is you have a lot you have to do. You're, you're required to follow all the same requirements as, say, Mesa Unified or Deer Valley Unified School District, who have 40,000 students, who have a district office the size of, you know, probably twice, maybe even three times yours. So, you have all the same requirements, and you have a half to a third of the staff to be able to figure out how to comply with all of them. So, you know, and that is pretty common with everybody but those really big districts, because where do you get the funding to cover the staff that you should have? On top of, you want to make sure you have your teachers, your teachers' aides, your librarian, you know, all the things that we traditionally think of when we think of funding a school. So, definitely don't feel alone on that.
Yes, question?
I'm just curious if the reconciliation for the EBT, is this the same issue that came out in the December single audit finding?
The prior year?
Being repeated?
Yes, it is the same. At this point, based on our understanding of how things are working, it is the same issue as in the prior year, yes.
So, it was not corrected?
No.
As far as we know at this...
As far as we know at this point, I understand is that there's the information that's either getting to the district, it either is not complete, or our understanding of the way the EBT is operating is, again, not complete.
Well, what's your timeframe to completing this EBT portion?
I am hoping to get at least the bulk of the actual test work and review of those items done within the next couple of weeks. Part of it is, is for them, we have to look at their claims payments. And so, there's a lot of hoops to jump through on that because it's HIPAA information. So, when they go through and they pull that, I actually have to sign and certify some documents to ensure that I'm, you know, abiding by those HIPAA practices so that I'm not off going, oh, so-and-so got treated for this, or anything like that. So, I am waiting for some of that to go through, but I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, I'll have at least the bulk of that done. The report itself will end up timing pretty closely in with the, the timing on a district report, which we're looking at potentially a January release date this year, because of some of the, the documents that are required that are coming in for your actuary studies. Those may not come in until mid-December, so we may need to wait about a month to be able to get those properly put and included.
Yeah, typically, typically, your, your report, at least for the comprehensive annual financial report, is released by December 31st. And so, in future years, hopefully that, if there's another EBT audit lined up exactly, it'd be issued before December 31st. And typically, the USFR and single audit sections are released in draft form in January, and they have to be finalized by March 31st.
So, question that, so have you been in contact with our EBT consultant?
Yes.
Because supposedly, I just talked to him, and he said he was working on getting, because we're not happy that we didn't have it at the end of June, and so he was supposedly working on this, and I think he said he was about done.
Yes, and he's been sending me quite a bit of information, and that's kind of where I'm hoping I can get through the bulk of that next week and have an idea of where we're sitting on that. I did, like I say, decide I needed to focus my time here on here because there's a lot of it to get through in a week. And we did have some staffing issues come up, so these guys, we had two people come in two days late. So, normally, an audit like this, I have four people for five days, and this time, I kind of had two people for five days and four people for three days. So, we had to make up some time in there, so... But he has been providing me with quite a bit on that one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just can we get a copy of that, because that's really helpful.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, for sure. Yeah, I'll get that to Mary, and then she can figure out how it needs to be disseminated to whoever wants it.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, well then, thank you very much, and thank you for doing that little 101 on what it... And we will go ahead and take a motion to it, yeah?
How many commotion were you, Jennifer?
Second.
Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Donna Marana?
Yes.